Planning Commission, August 5th, 2025. If you would, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, the United States of America, and to the Constitution of this country and its citizens. I am proud of you, thank you for the presence in this country, I'm grateful for all of the advice that you have, thankful to the earth and the city for our ability tonight, for everyone here tonight, for all the way that I do it, for the fair and just listening to the future approach of this country and its sports. Thank you for all the city employees and people themselves, they're everything that we may know and want for them, who will listen to this, it's gonna be great.
Thank you for that. Call to order, please. Begin with a roll call.
Bren Couch. Chris Hussein.
Here.
Clement Ogonyemi.
Here.
Garrett Gott-Harland.
Here.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Jennifer Keith.
Here.
Mark Kla.
Here.
Ray Cardiell.
Here.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of minutes from last month's?
Move to approve the minutes as drafted.
Thank you.
Second.
That passes 7-0. Next up on the agenda is an ordinance. I'll turn it over to our Planning Director.
So, the ordinance that we put in your packet for you all to review is for Act 314 of 2025. So, this act, we've talked about it in some work sessions with planning commissioners. This was formally introduced as House Bill 1510 in February earlier this year. And the purpose of this is to repeal the municipal authority to exercise any territorial jurisdiction over unincorporated areas of neighboring counties. The bill was passed in March. The governor signed it into law in March, officially renaming it Act 314. So, the packet included a copy of the act itself, a memo from our office, and a copy of the ordinance that we hope to have by council next Tuesday.
Thank you for that. So, Commissioners, it will be a motion to forward a city council to approve or deny this ordinance.
Motion to forward to council to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
That motion passes 7-0. Next...
I was just gonna say, that ordinance is gonna be forwarded to city council next Tuesday on the night.
We have three agenda items that have been tabled. The first is a conditional use request, C25-06. I also have one that's called C25-07. Both of those have been tabled. We also have a board adjustment that has been tabled, that is B25-49, Jose Cruz, Torres, Sierra. Those three items will not be heard tonight. Next up is items that were tabled last meeting. The first one is R25-39, Brooke Rando and Ginger Lee Martin. This is a request to rezone from A1 to MF12, presented by Angela Bordano and ESI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Brandon Rush with ESI. Since last month's meeting, we have a client who's got this property under contract, looking for rezoning to MF12, medium-density multifamily residential district. Our client believes that it fits with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which calls for this area to be medium-density residential, fits with the C2 to the west and north, and the hundreds of units at the Lynx at Springdale to the north, and has access on Levine, which is a collector's street. So, that's the proposal.
Thank you. Any staff comments?
The MF12 multifamily district is a medium-density zoning district that allows eight units per acre by right. It was established to provide areas for development, allowing more units per structure, providing more compact residential development, and promoting more efficient use of the land and utilities, and development of economical housing on smaller lots. This rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and is recommended for approval. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types, and appropriate to the size and income of all households living and working in Springdale. And larger multifamily developments should be located on sites with adequate space for off-street parking, accessory structures with recreational activity, and towards the edge of single-family residential areas where higher traffic generation and taller building heights can be better accommodated.
Thank you for that. Any public comment? This is a rezoning request. If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comments.
Hi, Judith McCann. I live at 21... Wow, I forgot my address. 2102 Stonebrook Street in Cobblestone Subdivision. One of my main concerns that we talked about last month was the buffering. The way the layout of this land is, is there are houses right up against those marker lines, homes with yards. And there will be no greenery. We don't know what the layout of their intent is. We don't know if there will be any green space there, if it will just be a lot of parking, asphalt, and two- or three-story dwellings. We don't know any of that. So, our concerns are heightened. Also, concerns with the amount of rain that we got last year. That's a huge block of land that will primarily be asphalt and concrete. And we're concerned about that amount of water coming in on these properties that our subdivision backs right up to that. So, not knowing the true plans that are being considered for this piece of property, it is very concerning to homeowners who live in that area. We've been there 24 years. So, we don't have any intention of leaving, and we really are not real happy about a bunch of apartments being at our back door.
Thank you.
My name is Victoria Gammel. I live at 2116 Cobblestone Street in Cobblestone Subdivision. My property, my house, looks... the backyard looks directly onto this field, this property in question. Again, per last month's concerns, we're... this property is completely surrounded by single-family homes. Granted, the Lynx are across the street, but they are some distance away from us. Another concern is the traffic on Levine does tend... it's a straightaway, and cars do tend to speed on there. The only ingress and egress from this property that I'm aware of is a single lot that goes onto Levine. If we're talking about 48 dwellings, you know, you figure at least two cars per dwelling, you're looking at 100-plus cars pouring out onto Levine. That's going to increase the traffic and possibilities of accidents. We are also concerned with the water pressure in our area is not that great to begin with. I know Springdale is trying to make improvements all over town regarding the water system, but adding 100-plus, you know, users to the water system, we're worried it's going to continue to decrease our water pressure. Again, what Judith mentioned, the division between the properties, is there going to be a fence? Is there going to be green space, trees? What is going to be to keep someone in a two- or three-story unit from looking directly into my bedroom windows? My bedroom windows are on the back of the house, along with most of my living space, and I do not cherish the thought of, you know, having an apartment complex or what have you, looking directly into my house, into my backyard. I feel like I would not be able to enjoy my backyard if I've got that to look at and them to look at me. The easement. I brought that up last month. The easement, from what I understand, it's a 20-foot easement, is 100% on our side of the property line, so where that black line is. We have a 20-foot easement where we cannot do any permanent structures or anything in our backyards. And there is no easement that I'm aware of on the other side of the property line. And I know that was something that you guys were going to look into or discuss, and I know it has to do with utilities, and there's not really a whole lot that can be done with that, but to me, that is a concern. You know, at the time, it was... at the time that our subdivision was built, why wasn't the property lines, you know, the easement split between the properties? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rhonda Coates, and I live on 2094 Cobblestone Street. My property adhered to the piece of property that we were talking about. As I had mentioned in last month, I'm not opposed to rezoning, but I am, you know, against the MF12 rezoning, just because it is a single-family home in the subdivision that I live in, not to mention the other subdivisions around the property. It's all a single-family home. And to me, putting in apartments or any kind of structure like that, there's nothing... that's a small piece of property there. And, you know, I think single homes would be better there versus an apartment or something like that, just because for the prettiness of it and everything. I think it'd be an eyesore, because there's nothing else around. We have the Lynx apartment, but a road, you know, divides us from that and everything, so it doesn't, you know, affect us. Not to mention, you know, putting in apartments or, like they were saying, the asphalt and different things, it brings our home value down, I'm afraid. And that I don't want to happen, because we have nice homes there, and we want to continue to have it and be able to enjoy our yard and enjoy, you know, looking out like we do.
Thank you.
Rod Gammel, 2116 Cobblestone Street. The gentleman brought up the Lynx apartments. I have no problem with them whatsoever. They don't back up to other houses. There's no houses up next to the Lynx. These are gonna be right up next to our house. They're gonna be able to see in our backyards, probably in our back windows. That's privacy issues. I've got a problem with that, okay? When I left here, we discussed it right outside the meeting here with the homeowners and with the real estate person. They didn't like the idea of these apartments going in there either. Now, all of a sudden, they do want to go with these in there. We discussed with the real estate person and the homeowners, they did not want these to go in there. And now they are.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Commissioners, any comments?
I do have one question, because I know we kind of chatted last week about you were gonna meet with them, and then, or last month, excuse me, and looking at possibly a lower density or something like that. I didn't know if that conversation did happen or determine that this is still the highest invest use for this space.
It was what the property owners decided to go with. They came in in the following days after the last planning commission meeting, and we walked through all the requirements, the way that we make zoning decisions and recommendations, and also everything that goes into multifamily design standards, that would require a certain amount of green space and buffer, and we went through all of that. And then, after that, what decisions they made, or it sounds like they have another authorized representative for this meeting. Their choice.
Any other comments?
Why is there no mention of said green space? Why do we not... why are we not made aware of those?
Because this is just a rezoning. We don't get into the design. That's not till later on in the process. Right now, this is just a strict rezon request.
And those would still be up for public?
Yes.
Opinion?
You would get a letter, you'd be notified, we'd be in the same room, and then that would give us... we would actually have a full set of designed plans for whatever it is they do propose on that lot. And then, that's when we can discuss drainage, roads, access, some of the other details that go into it. Because right now, nothing's been submitted, so we don't have anything to kind of review.
Right. That's the way we feel. You know, our homes are there, and we're very vested in this. In addition to that, a lot of mention has been made about the Lynx. Also, the Lynx, aside from the roads, there are no homes in that area, which someone did mention, but there's also a huge golf course that surrounds it that is beautiful, green, grass, green land, and water, and all of that. So, it's not just massive apartment buildings on a lot of asphalt. And that's... I think that's where our biggest problem lies, that and the privacy issues and the traffic.
Thank you.
So, I have a... do have a question. In regards to being notified, none of us were notified that this was gonna be on the agenda again. We were notified last month. I don't know what the protocol is for notifications, because we didn't find out about this being on the agenda till this morning, and we rallied to try and get as many people here as we could, and some just couldn't make it because of prior engagements. So, is it because it's still being the MF12 is what they're asking for, and that's what they asked for last month, and that's why we didn't get notified again?
No. Our Springdale zoning ordinance allows for a project to be tabled one time at a planning commission meeting without the requirement of having to re-notify everybody, but there's only that one time that could be tabled. So, if they weren't heard at this meeting, they would have to start the process all over. Or if there was a new zoning category chosen, they would have to start over.
Okay. And what are the parameters for posting the rezoning notices? Because the majority of us, I mean, we drive by the property entrance every day, and there's been, not that I have seen, the zoning notice went away. And all that's up there right now that we could see is just the for-sale sign, from the Realtor's sign. And so, the majority of us thought, you know, after our discussion with the homeowners last week, or last month, that they were going to reconsider downsizing their ask or, you know, lessening it from the MF12 down to a lower level. And that was the impression that we got from them, is that that's kind of what they wanted to do as well. So, when the zoning notice went away off the property, we all just kind of assumed, oh, they're just rethinking it and haven't pursued it, and, you know, so, like I said...
We don't want to assume with some of these situations, but they followed... all the procedures for our zoning ordinance was followed as far as notifications. That public hearing sign was 10 days prior to the original meeting, and since it was tabled. But I'm happy to follow up, send you a link to Chapter 130, where we have all those requirements of what it takes to do for that reason.
Well, I didn't... like I said, we just found out about the meeting this morning, so I didn't have time to, you know, between work, trying to figure out how long the sign should have stayed up or what have you. I'm just saying that we were under the assumption that maybe it wasn't happening right now, and we didn't need to kind of worry about it. It's just so happened, my son-in-law looked this morning, and he was like, oh, it's tonight. And so, I just want you to know, there would have been more people here, except for the short notice, though.
Thank you for that. I have a short comment. I would say, most of you guys know my stance on buffer, and when there's no buffer, I kind of have a hard time going from single-family to MF12. Not to mention, we had a previous rezon request in this area, and we went through a process, and they did get higher density, but not MF12 or MF16 for that very reason. And I think that's a prudent way to approach this. Personally, I don't speak for anyone else but myself, but that's where I stand. Excuse me? Do you have something you want to say? Please come to the podium. State your name and address.
Hi, I'm Angela Bordanero, and I'm with Fathom Realty. And I... just for the record, last planning meeting, we did table it, and obviously, the rules are, when it's tabled, the next... we know it's gonna be the next month. Everybody should know when the planning committee meeting is. That's my first comment. Second comment is, yes, we did speak to the homeowners afterwards, just to reassure them that they don't want apartments in their backyard either, because the homeowners are gonna stay there and live there. And I think that's real important to point out, because obviously, the plans that they're wanting to approve around them, they've already talked to the builders, the developers, and it's something nice. It's not gonna be something that's an eyesore. So, and I know the Springdale... sorry, I'm upset. I'm gonna take a breath.
You're fine.
Anyway, a property owner, a person should be able to have the right to their future of what they've invested in their property. When these clients, my sellers, have lived at that property in their family, they didn't complain about cobblestone being developed around them. They didn't complain about all the growth in Springdale. They want what's best for Springdale. They want what's best for their neighbors and for themselves. And they're not gonna jeopardize Springdale by putting multifamily properties there. It's gonna provide for people that need homes, nurses that are traveling. You know, and I like... I appreciate sharing too, because a lot of people are like, they don't want it in their backyard. NIMBYs, not in my backyards. But, you know, I don't see them... I mean, I don't see people being upset about Lindsay's apartments, or, you know, actually, whatever is developed, that's what we have city council for, is to make sure it's done in a way that is aesthetically approved and meets with the requirements of the city. So, I don't see a problem with it. I think my clients should be able to sell their property and have it developed around them in a way that they want to. I do know that they've been good neighbors to all the people in the neighborhood surrounding them in the past, and I just don't understand why it's such a problem. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Don't leave me. I've stayed up here for you. And my name is Ginger Martin, and I live at 4617 Levine Avenue. Homeowner. For one thing, they've brought up this easement again, and the easement is in their line, but we were grandfathered in due to them, my in-laws being there for a long time before them. And also, the utilities are open to my yard. I have to be the one that gives them permission to get in my yard with my dogs and have to deal with these people. When they got go, I had to give them permission to go all the way around my property. I don't appreciate them being abusive about this eas... the utility easement. The other thing is, it is our property, and if we want to put it up for sale and change the zoning if we can, then I think we should be allowed to do what Springdale wants, what is best. We don't want apartments like Lindsay. That's... that isn't what we're looking at. But that's not here or there this meeting. I understand that. But what she said, we should be allowed to do what... at least look into what we need to do for ourselves. It's too much for me and my husband. We've had it... we've had this beauty for them to look at, but now it's time for us to change for our own life, not everyone else's. That's all I have to say right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have something new? We got a long agenda tonight, so I'd love to get on board on this one.
If you'll allow me. We are not against them selling the property. We know it's their property that they inherited, and it's theirs to do what they want with. Our concern is the size and scope of what they're planning. And if they say they don't want the apartments in their backyard, then I don't understand why the MF12 is what they're asking for. Because to me, once they sell that property, if it gets rezoned to MF12 and they sell it, they're gonna be in the same boat we are. They're gonna have no say in what happens with the property. The people that buy it are gonna be able to come in and do what they want with it. That we will not have any input. I mean, yes, we can voice our opinions and everything, just like with this, when it comes to the buffer, et cetera, but what's going to be built and the size and scope of what will be built, it will be up to the new owners. And that is our concern. The size and scope, we're worried about the traffic, we're worried about the decrease in water pressure, we're worried about the cars, the noise, the traffic, security issues, you know, that all come when you have a larger apartment complex, which, to me, 48 units is a pretty good-sized apartment complex. And that, when you look at the lot, it is, yes, it's five-point-something acres, but it's not that big of an area when you're talking, you know, 48 units plus parking spaces, extra parking spaces and green space. And that's just our concern.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. Next up is R25-40.
You can... you have 15 days to appeal that rezoning. You have to put it in writing why you think the planning commission erred in their decision and submit it to the city clerk's office.
Next up is R25-40. This is J&amp;M Capital Ventures LLC. Request is to rezone from C2, MF16, and A1 to a pud. There's also a preliminary plat, 25-12 Haberton Trails, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jay Snapple. With ESI, we have before you tonight a PUD request. It's a residential planning development on 20 acres at the southwest corner of Haberton and Don Tyson Parkway. Couple housing types. We've got some rear-load, we've got some front-load, single-family houses, and then also some townhome-style units. And I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Any staff comments?
Haberton Trails is a proposed pud at southwest corner of Don Tyson Parkway and Haberton Road, featuring 54 single-family residential lots, 26 townhome units arranged around new and existing streets. This development includes different housing options, with some having attached rear-loaded garages accessing a proposed alley. Typical street-forward-facing house style and townhome units with garages. The spacing of the structures, variety of the housing options, and the absence of driveways along Don Tyson Parkway and Haberton Road should create an inviting space. Common outdoor space, amenities, existing floodway in proximity to Willie George Park, given emphasis to the outdoor space. There's a corresponding preliminary plat, PP2512, was submitted in conjunction with this. It should be noted that there were no variances or waiver requests for this rezoning. So, like Jason said, this is almost 19.96-acre area. And I just... I want to clarify just a couple things in here. So, we have 26 townhome units, and right now, at least the last resubmitted one showed eight different lots, but it's my understanding that each one is gonna be plotted individually for the townhome units, right?
That's correct.
So, the ultimate, we will have 26 townhome units on 26 lots for those. 45 rear-loaded, accessed via an alley. Nine front-loaded, single-family ones. No driveways on Don Tyson or Haberton Road. And for the parking, it looks like you actually... you provided, you met the required amount. We're gonna require 74, and you guys have provided 85 with four ADA spots included. The overall density of this, I do want to clarify, I think we had it, right now with the lot count, I think the density, it needs to be corrected to actually four units an acre, rather than three. Some of the proposed uses for this, primarily residential, but I saw in the pud agreement that you guys have Use Unit 4 restricted to only recreational uses only, no cultural and health facilities. and health facilities. I'm just, just question, was there anything in mind or anything like an example that you were thinking, or just trying to keep that open in case something does?
Yeah, I think it's just open. I don't, I don't think, there's no desire at this point in time.
Okay. Single-family dwellings, zero lot lines, townhomes, and then the model home temporary marketing office until your allotted amount of homes are. There's a couple pages I've highlighted I can send you guys that we need a couple of the acreages corrected, and some might just be a right-of-way discrepancy. Where on the plat, we've listed on one page that it's six acres, I'm, for the, for the common open space, that it's six acres total. Another page has 6.25, but the PUD development plan says 6.45. And I think we should note, although there is over six acres of common open space on the site, there's about 3.9 that are actually usable that aren't in that floodway. And some of these comments we'll get into whenever we have preliminary plat comments, but some of the stormwater mitigation, we have two detention ponds on site, one for each phase. And with the plat, as you'll notice in the packet, that this, this project, they plan to do it within two phases for building construction. And the way that the creek runs through it, it kind of naturally divides it into a northern and southern phase. And one other is that in the PUD document, and I think Building and Fire will probably have a comment about this, maybe with the plat, but it should, it should known that "All exterior walls of the dwelling erected on the lots shall be finished with high-quality materials. Primarily building materials will include brickstone, manufactured stone wood, and concrete sightings," which is Hardy brand. And then a note says, "Vinyl siding shall be allowed only above the first floor and shall not exceed 20% of the building's interior." I think it's just known that we're, we're not going to be in support of that. We would like to see non-combustible materials throughout the entire structure. And we have requested at least a revised plat showing those correct lot numbers for the townhomes, just so they are consistent with that PUD document. And we mentioned that there were going to be signs, two primary signs and two secondary signs for the development. And if we can just have just a little more detail, potential type, is it monument, and maybe an example, and height and size? An outdated comment. I apologize. I have seen that, that signed one. And do we have any of those example pictures of what the houses may look like in here? So for the staff comments on the rezoning, this district... So the Planned Unit Development District, it's, we, we allow this to streamline subdivision and zoning by combining both of those processes into one single review. So this joint approach is supposed to allow the city and the developer to evaluate a proposal simultaneously, especially beneficial when the same developer provides the infrastructure and the amenities that enhance the marketability of the project. The approved PUD plan remains valid through changes of ownership, reflecting in a shared commitment between both the developer and the city. And the staff comments on this rezoning request, "This district is, is designed to protect the land until an orderly transition to urban development has been accomplished." Proposable, the proposal is compatible with the existing and future land uses in this area. The rezoning request is recommended for approval, subject to a revision of the development plan and the covenants with the edits that we just went over. The request is keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. One, to protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. And two, appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors.
That did it for PUD. Do you also vote on PUD, then take on preliminary plat? Do you want us to vote the PUD first, or you want to do it all at once?
It would, but if, if there wants to be, if you guys want to discuss some of the elements or discuss any of the rezoning, but it would have to be voted on before we could hear the preliminary plat.
Any public comment about this rezoning request to a PUD?
I had one comment. Is that working? I just think it's a shame that there's no commercial shown in this PUD, especially when you look back at the zoning map, it's just yellow, solid. And we did have a commercial piece at the roundabout that's being changed. So, that's my only comment.
Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, two little comments. One, the one that we're, we're going to be opposed to anything that's five feet, that's less, that's five feet, that doesn't have non-combustible. The other thing is, is this is new for us, townhomes, with lot lines and common walls. Just a note to let your client know that we will require probably a survey to locate that common wall, so we don't have any conflicts with the title.
No problem.
Another cost.
We don't have a problem with the material change either, so we'll do all high-quality materials.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments about the PUD? If none of this, a call for the vote.
Call for vote.
Thank you. That passes seven zero. Now moving forward with the preliminary plat, staff comments?
In addition to the standard planning comments, go ahead and update that landscaping plan prepared by PDG, and ensure that property lines are clearly shown for Lot 58. The number of residential lots needs to be corrected throughout the plat plans to reflect the 54 single-family lots and the appropriate number of townhome lots. Currently, we have eight lots, but if there will be a total of 26 townhomes, then we can go ahead and update that wherever it's applicable. Go ahead and clarify the handicap accessible ramps that are planned on the south side of Street 3, where it intersects with Street 4. I believe a label is just missing, but they might be proposed in that area. The engineer of record noted that the cluster mailboxes will be located within the POA lots. Please coordinate the final location with the postmaster and inform our office once that's finalized on the plat. The lighting details for the amenities were mentioned, surrounding the pickleball court, the dog park, the gazebo, the benches, the playground. Those just need to be added to the plat as well.
Engineering comments. The sidewalk on Don Tyson Parkway should be 10 feet wide, and y'all had proposed a two-foot expansion to the existing eight-foot. I think that could cause issues with bicyclists having that joint in the wheel path. So, we recommend you request a waiver of those additional two feet, and we keep the consistent eight feet that we have along the rest of Don Tyson. There appears to be an existing pond in the southwest corner of Phase 1 in several low-lying areas, holding water in Phase 2. Hydrick soils are shown in the soil report, and aerial imagery suggests wetland hydrology. There needs to be a field study to determine whether wetland plants exist. All street sections shall be determined by formal design with geotechnical analysis. Add curb to the end of the dead ends and wrap the sidewalk around. Rework Street 6, that's the one that turns into an alley. I think we already talked about that a little bit. Show drainage easement for the creek and the ponds that doesn't include the playground and other amenities, since you can't have structures and a drainage easement. On the townhome lots, I was wondering what would be in between the driveways. I think there's only two feet between each driveway. Was wondering if there would be landscaping, if it would be grass, you know, what would go in that space. Submit a floodplain development application, including a NORI certification for the work in the floodway. Show minimum finished floor elevations for the homes in and adjacent to the floodplain. And then just a question, if, if there's a plan to file a letter of map change.
Thank you. Any other comments by staff? Any public comments regarding this preliminary plat? Commissioners, any comments about the preliminary plat?
I know we talked about there being plenty of parking. I, just based on previous items with alleys, I guess there will be something that'll prevent, there's not going to be parking, or is there going to be signage that would be in the alleys? Is that a typical?
Yes, we would typically require no parking signs. Thank you.
There are no further comments. This will be a motion subject to staff comments.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. That passed a seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next rezoning request is R25-41, Robinson Properties Limited Partnership, LLP. Request is to rezone from MF16 to a PUD. There are also large-scale development to review and also a variance, I believe, two variances. This is presented by ISG.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioner. TJ Wells with ISG. We're actually representing both this item and the next item. And just for clarity upfront, we are requesting that both these items be tabled, but we would like to share a high-level overview of the project. I also have one of the development partners here that would just like to share, share a few words. This item, Item B and Item C next, are two separate parcels along Ford Avenue, near Ford Avenue and Butterfield Coach Road, but cohesive development. And it's a partnership between CDC Bentonville and Mercy Housing, a joint affordable housing opportunity, multifamily, 138 units between both the north site and the south, 60 on the north, 78 on the south site. Overall, the intent of this project is to be contextual design with the existing wetlands and nature in the area. We've gone over this with staff multiple times to try and find a solution that would be beneficial to all the residents of Springdale and meet the housing objectives and needs of the region. The north site, as a whole, does have some deed restrictions on it. They require it to preserve existing open space and natural resources, which we believe this does by providing a couple outlots, and also be utilized for affordable housing. So, overall, we think this project will be a great project. A few of the comments from staff are just some additional details relating to specific amenities throughout the site that will be designated, and then also how will those open spaces be owned and maintained. And the intent on those is not to pass that off to the City of Springdale for ownership and maintenance. There just needs to be some agreements in place, and we plan on providing additional content for next month for that. I'm going to turn it over to the developer, Nick, and he can share a little bit about Mercy Housing. And if y'all have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any.
Thank you.
Thanks, TJ. Good evening. This is Planning Commission. Nick Eminheiser, Associate Director of Real Estate for Mercy Housing. So, Mercy Housing is one of the nation's largest nonprofit affordable housing developers, and this will be our first project in Arkansas. We're very honored to be here and to be entering the market. Obviously, you guys have a beautiful community, and we're looking to continue that with this development further east as, you know, as Spring, Springdale pushes out, you know, to the, in all directions really, but in this case, to the east. As TJ mentioned, we are working on a number of partnerships with this project. We're partnering with CDC Bentonville, which is a regional leading provider of affordable housing, and Adfa, the Arkansas Development Finance Authority, to finalize our capital stack for this project. We are hoping to go into, to submit an application to Adfa for tax credits and home funds, which are, have recently come into question with some recent legislation. So, we're, we are anxious to get moving on that, that item, but appreciate the opportunity to take some additional time to, to suss out these details on amenities, as well as the, the commons, the outdoor common space that I understand led to some questions. So, yeah, happy to answer any questions that you guys may have, and also looking forward to a fuller presentation next month.
Thank you for that. Any questions from the Commissioners? I did notice there's a line item for a replat. Is that something you guys want to move forward tonight and then pick up the PUD next month?
We'd, we'd like to still table the replat.
Sounds good.
For next month as well, just to hear everything as one cohesive.
Very good.
Subject matter.
Yep.
Thank you. Looking forward to hearing more about this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is R25-43, OC Springdale LLC. This is a request from A1 to a PUD. Tonight is PUD night, if y'all didn't know that. This, in addition to the rezoning request, there's three variances, request and a waiver. This is presented by Odyssey Engineering LLC. Mr. Gibson.
Good evening, Mark. How are you? Derek Gibson, property owner. I just wanted to start off with a couple of comments and then turn it over to Jake Casey, who's been our engineer on this, on this project. But first and foremost, thank you to the staff for the work. We've been working on this project for quite some time. Thank you for the commission and the working sessions, and we're able to take that feedback and hopefully have a productive presentation and being able to move forward with this. But this request sets us up for a project called Canopy Cotages. This is a little bit of a unique design and something that's a little bit new to Springdale. There's a couple of different variances that are tucked into this PUD that we will be presenting as we go, but those are important because they allow us to create the density that gives us the opportunity to put more units on the property to try to serve the housing need that's here in Springdale. We also are looking at this as it's creating attainable, affordable housing, and so the potential for a buyer increases the pool size because of the price point and the end of this, when you're looking at the size and, and the cost of the homes going into it. We think it's a great transition on the property. The property started out being nine and a half acres. There's an RV park on the front that fronts the Thompson east side of, of the property, and then the six acres on the back, which is the subject for the rezone tonight. A great way to, to address the missing middle-type homes when you're going from an RV park into the subdivision. We took that feedback in consideration when we were looking at expanding the RV park from the adjacent property owners. So we think that's, that's an important piece to note, and the fact that it is a good transition back into those subdivisions. The other key piece to this, that what will be part of the PUD and part of the project will be improvements to Morris Avenue that are funded and, and cost covered by the developers. For those that are familiar with that street, it's, it starts out being a two-lane street, coming off of Thompson, goes down to a one-lane street, back into a subdivision. It's not the only access point to the subdivision, but it is a access point to the subdivision for fire and police and even the patrons that live there to come in and out. So we think that will be an additional amenity to, to the city as well. So, ultimately, the project that this rezon would support, I believe it's, it's the best use of the property. I think it serves all parties involved, including the city, the citizens, the adjacent property owners, and then us as developers. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Jake, and he can talk more of the technicals. We've got a PowerPoint. I'm not sure when it was distributed to the commission, so we're going to use that, touch on a few things, but if you guys want to go deeper, happy to do that. So, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jake Chavis with Odyssey Engineering. Just wanted to kind of discuss what we're proposing here a little bit. So, and the variances at first, we're proposing a 42-lot PUD, just under, just a little over five acres. You can go to the next slide. I can discuss our variances. Maybe one more. So, we're, we're asking for three variances tonight. The first one is, PUDs aren't allowed in Springdale unless they're under 10 acres. We believe that a PUD allows us to kind of create a more cohesive community here and provide more amenities. The second one is a parking variance. Generally, in Springdale, parking is not allowed to count in garages. We're asking for that to, to count for our parking requirement here. And then, the third variance we're seeking is for house width. Generally, right now, it's 24 feet is the, the minimum. We're asking for, for 20 feet. And then scroll over a couple more. We have the land use. Yeah, perfect. Back a little more. So just wanted to briefly touch on the land use for this area. In your master or future land use plan, this area is dictated as commercial. And along the frontage of the highway, that makes a lot of sense. And it's generally, right now, being treated as a commercial property with an existing RV park. That is considered commercial. But in all other aspects of the adjacent, adjacent to the property, it's single-family. We're hoping that this PUD is a little bit more dense, will kind of help bridge that gap between the commercial area and the, and the single-family residential on all sides. And then I just wanted to touch briefly on our amenities that we're proposing with this property. If you could go over. That's perfect. We're proposing four real amenities. In the northeast corner, there's a community garden space for the residents to use, come together in an environmental nature. And then to the northwest corner, there's a dog park area for, for the community to, to let their dogs roam wild there. And then to the southeast, we have a wet pond. And then to the southeast, we have a wet pond that is going to have some landscaping around it and a trail feature for the community to, to kind of walk around. And then with, we also have a gazebo that's proposed right next to that, that wet pond to act as kind of a community space for the citizens living in this, in this community. And then we have a community mailbox as well to kind of keep some of those mailboxes being too crowded and not looking great along, along the public streets there. And just to kind of back up a little bit, this is something we talked about with you guys in our work session. We took a lot of your feedback, most of it in fact, and we've had several meetings with staff. This is to kind of iron this out, best present this in the way where you'd want to see this. One last thing I want to touch on is our on-street improvements. We all know Morris is, is a little narrow right now. We are proposing half-street improvements within, in accordance to the master street plan here. And that, that includes improvements all the way to the highway. That's full curb and gutter, widening the road and adding a five-foot sidewalk all the way to, to the highway. And I'm here for any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you for that. Any staff comments?
Well, it sounds like Jake covered a lot of it. The Canopy cottages is a proposed PUD on Morris Avenue that would create, so is it forty-four? I had my documentation forty-four. Is it forty-four or forty-three cottage style? Okay. So forty-three, small, small lot for cottage homes arranged around new streets, designed as a transitional neighborhood between nearby single-family and multifamily zones with site featuring, features, including a trail, gazebo around detention pond, dog park and community garden. Full street improvements along that north side of Morris Avenue, the entirety of the subject property, plus off-site improvements, including east all the way to seventy-one, as you had mentioned. So to touch on some of, some of the information about this PUD, the variances that they are seeking. So that size, right now, this, this land is six point zero-three acres. The minimum size for a PUD in Springdale is ten acres. So we're hearing a variance request for that. Overall density of this development, I had the calculation with forty-four units, so it might be a little bit less, but seven point five acres a unit. Right now, it's undeveloped in A1. You guys are proposing residential, but just one type of, of housing structure for all the lots that are proposed. So since the lot sizes are fairly uniform throughout the development, we have, rather than different styles, they all kind of have twenty in front, five-foot side backs, ten rear, but those secondary frontage lots have that five-to-ten range build to zone, which I think would be helpful for them. Just confirming those cottage styles, non-combustible materials all the way around. All the lot sizes, thirty-two foot frontage, each lot approximately three thousand square foot. The structure is going to be two-story. And again, another variance is that twenty-foot width that Jake touched on, where our minimum, uh, single-family dwelling requirement is twenty-four, twenty-four by twenty-four. The orientation of this development, all the façades have, in garage, are street-facing. The parking, this is another area where we have a variance request. So right now, we, we require two off, off-street parking spaces per single-family dwelling. And so they have, overall, they have over the required, but that would be for a variance, including the garages as parking. And then with the street improvements and the new public street they'll be creating internally, approximately thirty-five public on-street parking spaces also provided. And staff comments and recommendation for this rezoning. The district is designed to protect agricultural land until an orderly transition to urban development and has been accomplished. A rezoning request is recommended for approval, subject to staff comments with regard to the development plan and covenants revised. The request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility available, availability, and neighborhood compatibility and environmental factors. And some of the specific comments that we would like to see with a potential revision. So site-specific covenants, so there were some sample covenants provided. But with the amenities that are proposed, especially with the community garden and some of the amenity maintenance, we need site-specific covenants that just address how that is going to be structured. And then just note, this was a rezoning request with a site plan provided, but not in conjunction with an actual preliminary plat project. So just to be noted that if approved, great improvement not to be issued until a preliminary plat in conjunction has been submitted and approved by the appropriate bodies. And then just a note to continue to work with the engineering department on the road design for Morris about how that would look, the off-street improvements and the on-street improvements towards seventy-one.
Thank you. Any public comment regarding this rezon to a PUD? Commissioners, any comments from you? I have a couple of questions. Well, I have one comment. One, great job in working with us and finding a, a project that kind of fits what everybody kind of wanted for this section. Appreciate your effort on that for sure. Some of the images, some show different facades, front-facing facades, some show identical. What, what are you guys proposing as far as what the houses look like from the street? Are they all going to be identical or are they going to be mixed up? Just curious, because it can get kind of redundant if it's the same-looking thing over and over and over.
Let me just go back just a few slides, Sarah. So, one more. So these, one more maybe. There we go. So they will all be a little bit different in materials and, and colors. This is a product that the home builder has, has done before. And in, in those neighborhoods, they were all, all different.
So Mark, yeah, this is a better representation than that one image that you showed.
Sure. Thank you. Do you guys, I guess we'll take the variances first. Can you speak toward your waiver request? Sorry.
Am I, am I on? Just want to make sure the same comment is known, that you've got five-foot side setbacks. Fire marshal proposes, or the fire department proposes five-foot side backs, unless the cladding on those side setbacks is non-combustible. So that's no wood, no vinyl, no ethes.
Yeah, so just to kind of make utilities, these lots are going to be wide enough to where the overhangs are still going to be five feet away from the property line. Is that all you're saying?
Yeah, we still need to have that. Because you're still, that's going to make you six feet.
Yeah. Okay. No problem.
But that does make us feel a lot more comfortable, too.
I'm not sure what that meant.
The reason I, the reason I brought that up is because we didn't have a covenant or a full blood plan.
Can you speak toward the waiver of stub outs? I guess I'm confused on that. It looks like we have stub outs on Morris.
I think that was a mistaken.
Carryover or something?
Yeah, because, because they are using Morris as their main access. It was for stub outs to the other directions, which are not possible because they're all fully developed at this point.
Correct. So I guess we'll just bark that offer, review.
But Katie, just to confirm, they're still, they still need to request a waiver for stub outs to what, the north and the west?
Right, so this waiver should say waiver of street stub outs to the east, north, and west.
So commissioners, we'll look at the three variances. Do you want to do those together or separately? Together. So these will be a variance for reduction of minimum size of PUD from the typical ten acres to below that. A variance for reduction of parking requirements. A variance for reduction of minimum size for single-family dwellings. It's a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes six to one. Next is the waiver of street stub outs to the north and south. This will be a motion to forward to City Council to approve or deny this waiver request.
Could we correct the record and state that it is a stub out to the east, north, and west?
Yes. This waiver request is to the east, north, and west. This will be a motion to forward to City Council to approve or deny.
Motion to forward to City Council to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Thank you. That motion passes seven zero. Last is a call for a vote for the PUD.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes six one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to City Council on August twenty-sixth.
Next up is R twenty-five dash forty-four Daniel Kramer. This is a request from C two to C five, presented by Earthplan Designs Alternatives PA.
Thank you for hearing this today. My name's Sarah Gertz. I'm with EDA. And we are requesting a rezon from C two to C five. The area had, there is an existing building there now. And the owner is wanting to add drives and parking and around the, the structure and utilize it for, um, uh, community events, birthdays, that kind of thing. So the building will pretty much stay the same. I think maybe an awning is going to be put on it, just minimal changes. And right now around it, there are religious, commercial, there's storage, there's industrial uses and restaurants.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Typical uses in a C five district are not generally compatible with pedestrian-oriented commercial districts, since they tend to obstruct and interfere with pedestrian movement. Appropriate locations for this district are along heavily-traveled major, major traffic arterials. The subject property is approximately three hundred and fifty foot, feet south of Highway four twelve east and Arterial Street. And the rezoned request meets the minimum lot area of fourteen thousand square feet and the lot width of not less than a hundred for the C five request. This rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Ensure, assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas that are sufficient size and in proper locations.
Thank you. Any further staff comments? Any public comments regarding this rezon request? Commissioners? Here and now, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-sixth.
Thanks.
Next up is R twenty-five dash forty-five J and J Edwards LP, LLP, ISG South LLC, and Three E Development LLC. That's a mouthful. This is a request from C two to I one, presented by Bateson Associates.
Hi, I'm Braden Bateson Associates. Our client is requesting a rezon from C two to I one. They would like to add a building or add an addition to that building right now and its uses are very similar with I one compatibility. We do plan on leaving a buffer along the north next to Robinson Avenue. And then we also plan on leaving a O one buffer to the south.
Thank you for that. Staff comments?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is recommended for approval. Encourage the development of industries that further diversify, stabilize the city's economic base that are compatible with labor force, raw materials, industrial climate, and provide space for new and expanding high-technology industries with low environmental impact and consolidate industrial areas near traffic arteries and collectors, rail and air facilities, and major utility trunk lines.
Any further staff comments? Any public comments regarding this rezon request? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Walter Godwin, four-two-two Village Lane. My concern originally had been, and I think he just addressed it, was the O one zoning, the buffer between our houses and this potential industrial rezoning. But as long as that O one, which is actually a separate, completely separate plot, completely separate, separate lot, excuse me, remains O one to provide that buffer, I have no, no other real objection to it.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments? If none, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to City Council on the twenty-sixth.
Next is R twenty-five dash forty-six FRHP eight LLC. This is a request to rezon from C six to C five, presented by EDG.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Hopkins, EDG, here to represent this rezon. The intent is just to downzone to C five, because C six really only allows like an automotive type of zoning. So that's, that's the intent, but I'm here for any questions that y'all have.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Typical uses in a C five are not generally compatible with pedestrian-oriented commercial districts, since they tend to obstruct and interfere with pedestrian movement. Appropriate locations for this district are along heavily-traveled major traffic arterials. This location is on an Arterial Street, Arterial Street, and meets the minimum lot width and total area required for the C five zoning. This rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic tax base, base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations and encourage the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale, retail, service, and office uses where the highest traffic volumes and greatest utility demands can be served and more extensive outdoor displays of materials will be expected and permitted that has frontage and/or access to I forty-nine.
Thank you. Any further staff comments? Any public comment regarding this rezon request? Commissioners, any comments? If none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes seven zero. Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the twenty-sixth.
Next up is R twenty-five dash forty-seven Rodeo Partners LLC. This is a request from I one to MF sixteen, presented by Craft and Toll.
Good evening Commissioners. Taylor Lindley with Craft and Toll. Yes, we have twelve acres here off of M Avenue, east of the rodeo grounds, requesting rezon from I one to MF sixteen. There is existing commercial uses adjacent to this property, or sorry, existing residential multifamily uses adjacent to this property with existing commercial zoning and multifamily zoning, with one of those being multifamily sixteen as well. So we're just requesting a rezon to match that MF sixteen and hope to do a development that blends and corresponds with the surrounding multifamily development. So available for any questions if you have them. Thanks.
Thank you. Staff comments?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is recommended for approval. Encourage the development of a variety of housing types for appropriate size and income of all households living and working in Springdale. And appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors.
Lot of compatibility. Any other staff comments? Are there any public comments regarding this rezon request? Commissioners, any comments? If none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you both. That passes seven zero. Can't wait to see this one.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to City Council on the twenty-sixth.
Anticipate like a rodeo theme, thing, you know? Next up is R twenty-five dash forty-eight Lone Lycans LLC. This is a request from C two to C six, presented by Swoop Consulting.
Good evening. I'm Dirk Thibodeau, representing, or with Swoop Consulting, representing the owner, requesting the rezon from C two to C six. We're only requesting a portion of this to be rezoned. It's approximately point five acres for this rezon request. And the request is so that we can carve out this section so open display commercial can be utilized.
Thank you. Staff comments?
I do want to note that there was a preliminary plat, PP twenty, twenty-three dash O two for a commercial subdivision that was approved in twenty twenty-three. for a commercial subdivision that was approved in 2023. That plat has since expired, however, the developer intends to seek reapproval to continue this development. And the subject tract that we're talking about is located within that area. But for this rezoning, the request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable, commercial concentrations, and to encourage the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale, retail, service, and office uses where the highest traffic volumes and greatest utility demands can be served. For more extensive outdoor display of materials will be expected and permitted and that have frontage and/or access to I49.
Any other staff comments? Any public comments regarding this rezone request? I have a question. How much, how large is the parcel? And then you mentioned it's half an acre is what, or what was the size? If you can't help me, when we scale out to larger, it's a larger footprint than what you're looking at in this drawing. So I wanted to make sure I'm clear of what you're asking for.
I do not know the acreage. I can't tell you that, what the overall acreage is.
Sure.
But what we're carving out is 0.5 of that overall tract.
And that's represented in the same as you see before you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There are no further comments. This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes 7-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to City Council on the 26th.
Next up is R25-49, Harold Floyd and Billy Sue Harmon Revocable Living Trust. His request is to rezone from O1 to C2 presented by ESI.
Yes, thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Our request tonight is to rezon this piece of property from O1 to C2. Property adjacent south is currently zoned C2, so I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Although this request does not, does not align with the 2017 Conference of Land Use Plan, it is consistent and compatible with surrounding land uses and projected growth patterns and is recommended for approval. That's in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Land Use Plan. To improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable, commercial concentrations, and to encourage the development of small-scale neighborhood retail and services uses at the edge of logical neighborhood areas or within neighborhoods where suitable sites exist and conditions are appropriate to balance compatibility with convenience.
Thank you for that. Any further staff comments? Any public comments about this rezone request? Commissioners, any comments from you? If none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes 7-0.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to Council on the 26th.
And our final rezone request for the night is R25-50, J&amp;M Capital Ventures LLC. This request is to rezon from I1 and SF2 to I2 presented by ESI. And apparently Jason.
Yes, thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Yeah, our request tonight here is to rezon. So the western portion of this property is already I1. Our request tonight is to take the adjacent parcel that my client owns and a portion of the western parcel to I2.
So the I2 will remain predominant? I1 will remain.
The eastern portion of it is I2. You're requesting it to be I2.
Staff comments?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is recommended for approval. Consolidate industrial areas near traffic arteries and collectors, rail, air facilities, and major utility trunk lines. Encourage the development of industries that further diversify and stabilize the city's economic base that are compatible with the labor force, raw materials, and industrial climate, and provide space for new and expanding high-technology industries with low environmental impact.
Thank you. Any further staff comments? Any public comment regarding this request? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you for coming on.
Thank you. Thanks so much for having us tonight and allowing us to speak. I'm Angela Oxford and I live at 106 East Bailey. And was made aware of this. And we are already surrounded by industrial use areas. And just knowing that this area will have a a deeper industrial purpose concerns us regarding the particulates in the air, just the additional traffic in the area. And we're just concerned about, I know everyone talks about our own property values, but our little neighborhood is attempting to create community. And just having additional industrial use there makes it really challenging.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adriana Ramsey. My husband and I stay at 1016 Brogdon Street, just honestly a few feet from Angela Oxford. And we honestly share the same, share the same concern. We have found that the booming part of Springdale has been amazing and honestly, an amazing place where we bought our first home. But if we could face it, where we live, Springdale stinks. It literally stinks. And so with that, the idea of not only a more industrial crowd, more industrial traffic, more industrial air pollution, more industrial lower air quality, not only, as she said, affects the quality and the home value of our community, but honestly, the quality of life in our neighborhood as well. And so those are the same concerns that not only her and I share, but also our neighbors that we've gotten to know. One being one of the founders of, or who share their, sell their honey at the Springdale Farmers Market every Saturday that have called that place home. Our other neighbor who not only raised their grandkids, but also their great-grandkids as well, that have lived through the stink that has lived through the already industrial parts. But the fact of creating that even a more industrial crowded area is not something we're for.
Thank you.
Hi there. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Natalie O'Brien. I live at 143 Old Wire Road. I also share the same concerns as Ms. Angela and Ms. Adriana. My main concern is the noise pollution. In that area, there is already a lot of industrial activity. And noise pollution is present all throughout the day and also all throughout the night. If you live in that area and if you're like me, you've probably been woken up in the middle of the night by noise coming from those industrial plants. So I'm concerned about the added noise and also the added traffic on Old Wire. There's already no sidewalks and I see a lot of pedestrians and people riding their bicycles. So I worry about their safety with increased traffic, particularly with if there could be trucks coming down that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments? If none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That fails 4-3.
You can appeal the planning commission's decision. You have 15 days to provide in writing why you think the planning commission aired their decision and submit it to the city clerk's office. And we'll hear that appeal at council.
Next up is preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. Or next, matter is PP 25-14, Creekfront 49 Revised. This was previously PP 24-09 presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Yeah, we submitted a revised preliminary plat for this commercial subdivision. Ultimately, kind of modifying some lot lines, street infrastructure, street location, same as previously approved. You can see here the seven lots that we're proposing. There is an unbuildable lot in there as well. But I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments for planning, just make sure to remove the blue line of trees that you've called out on the landscape plan.
There's no comments.
Is there any public comment regarding this preliminary plat?
If I may just add to the planning comment?
You may.
It's because the green, they provide a landscaping plan with this revised preliminary plat, which was really great to see. But the green is what is proposed with this preliminary plat. But the blue, we just asked for it to be removed since we're, it's already being reflected on the large-scale developments that we have coming through. That was the only reason.
I would like to just kind of take this a little further on the landscape plan because there are two comments on our next two commercial projects in this subdivision regarding perimeter landscaping. So the plan for this overall kind of master landscape plan was to kind of show and identify preserved trees for perimeter landscaping in certain areas. And then the added trees for certain other perimeter landscaping. And then the blue that's being referenced is the perimeter landscaping that would be typical of commercial projects for that buffer on our north and east line. So that's, that's really the intent for this. And it does carry over and transition into the two large-scale development projects. And the green would be for the two large-scale projects, not for the plat, if that, if that makes sense. Because we want to put them in with the large-scale developments that are adjacent to those and not with the final plat of that subdivision.
Thank you for clearing that up. Maybe, I'm not sure. Any public comments regarding this preliminary plat? Commissioners? If none, this is a motion subject to staff comments.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. That passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is R, excuse me, FP 25-07, Noah's Landing. This is presented by ESI as well.
Hi, everyone. Josh Haley with ESI here. Tonight, we're asking for the approval of the final plat for Noah's Landing. It has 54 lots and I'm here to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Just a couple of comments for planning. In addition to the standard comments, please update the note concerning the monument sign easements that need to be at least 10 feet away from water and sewer facilities. And update note number four on the cover page, which we have discussed. So I think we've probably got that covered.
Engineering comments. Submit all the final plat checklist items and then submit the asphalt core report for the fire access road.
Thank you. Any public comments regarding this final plat? Commissioners, any questions or comments? If none, this will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. That passes 7-0.
Josh, I just want to mention, if you want this final plat to go to City Council for next Tuesday on the 12th, then we need the ordinance and any revisions that need to be made on the plat by tomorrow, close the business in our office.
Okay, perfect. I'll get that to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on with large-scale developments. Next up is L25-19, The Grade. We also have a variance request, distance from a structure to drainage easement. This is presented by Bateson Associates.
Hi, Braden with Bates again. We are proposing a two-phased commercial development off of Graham and Robbins Road. I believe we are proposing roughly 6,500 square foot of retail space and 17,000 square feet of warehouse.
Thank you. Staff comments?
For planning, besides our standard comments, we have a future, or I'm sorry, not a future, a few, a couple of text edits to make. And then all sides of a principal building that directly faces in a budding right-of-way shall feature at least one customer entrance. So we need to add one to the north. And then if Springdale Water Utilities will not permit the eastern perimeter trees as they are proposed, a variance will need to be requested. And then we also need to define the areas which are to be sodded.
We can do that.
Engineering comments and a clarification on the variance request. They're asking for a variance from the distance of a structure to a wet pond or a permanent lake as it's referred to in the code. Wet ponds should be set back 50 foot from any building. Typically in residential subdivisions, we do not want a, you know, water feature to have the risk of overflowing and flooding a house. When it's a commercial building, you know, we can be a little bit more lenient. The way the land lays here, if the pond did block up and overflow, it would overflow into the street and back into the storm system. So it's, it's really not an issue. They are still able to get the full 20-foot drainage easement that's required. Oh, wait, I have no more. Sorry. All-street sections shall be determined by formal design with geotech analysis. Provide typical sections for Robbins and Graham showing what improvements are needed to bring them to master street plan standard, including curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, et cetera. Submit structural plans for the retaining walls prior to construction. A temporary construction easement will be needed from the southern property owner prior to construction for the work on their property. And the access easement for the drive will need to be filed and like the file number included on this plan set.
So to confirm, Katie, are you okay with the variance request? Thank you. Any public comments regarding this large scale? Commissioners, any questions or comments?
So unfortunately, the photometric plan that we received is kind of cut off. So I can't see any information on the light fixtures that are proposed. I just want to clarify or confirm they are all cutoff fixtures? Yes, ma'am. I did have one other, just, I noticed that there's like a future bus stop type thing. Was just going to note that you're, you might want to just, then this is just a side note, not official, but put a feeder of some kind out there so for future electrical to that location. So if they want to add lighting under the canopy or whatever gets put out there. Absolutely. We can do that.
Thank you. So the variance request will be a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
That passes 7-0. The large scales of motion subject to staff comments?
Motion subject to staff comments?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. That passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is L25-22, Creekfront 49, Lot 2. Presented by ESI.
Thank you. I'm Cameron Blumley with ESI. I'm here to represent a proposed large-scale development on Lot 2 of the recently approved Creekfront 49 commercial subdivision. We're not requesting any variances or waivers and I'm happy to answer any questions if you need.
Thank you. Staff comments?
All right. In addition to standard comments for planning, we will still require preliminary perimeter landscaping along the southern property line. So the line that would border Lot 3. And then planning did note a wall sign. Just make sure to reference Building Code Chapter 98 for signed permits, things of that nature.
For the wall sign, I think we're gonna, we have that on the list to take care of for a building permit, but we are well aware of it. And in the landscaping, in reference to the master landscaping plan for the Creekfront 49 subdivision that was approved, we are trying to, are proposing to preserve the existing canopy south of the property to count as the perimeter landscaping along that property line.
If I will, and not to be nitpicky, but the way that if you look at the preliminary plat now landscaping, the way that those preserved ones, I'm glad you guys did that. I encourage that, the landscaping plan. But it looks like those preserved ones are on the southern border of that, that thin lot, what is it, Lot 3? on the southern border of that, that thin lot, what is it, Lot Three, rather than on the northern border that would actually be adjacent to this property. Is that right? Am I?
Yeah, I think, I think it's near there, the thin section of that unbuiltable lot.
Yes, that was the intent, was to place, preserve them on the south side of Lot Three along that access drive there for the buffering for both of those lots on the perimeter landscaping.
But is that other lot that, with the thin entrance, is that one of the developable lots, like buildable?
There'll be an access drive through there, and then the developable piece is down here to the south corner, trying the piece of this.
So basically, like, the trees that were proposed that we saw would kind of be for both lots potentially, or serve that?
Yes. And we also added additional trees on the north side as per landscaping. That's over and above what is, what was required. So we tried to use the existing tree that we're preserving on the southern line, and then we added additional trees to the north side to, the intent was to meet the requirement.
And I think you did. I just wanted, I just want to clearly understand it, just so that we know going forward.
And just for reference, I did go down and look at that existing canopy, and it's in really good shape. There's a lot of mature trees, and it's very opaque.
Good.
Thank you, Katie.
I do have a couple of comments if.
Please do.
This development will require a floodplain development permit application. And I understand that this development is mostly a storage facility for materials. Typically, when you have materials stored in the floodplain, there needs to be some kind of plan of how they will not be carried away in a flood and cause risk to anyone downstream. I know there's been a significant amount of fill on this property, so I'm not sure if the plan is to just remove this lot from the floodplain altogether. If it stays in the floodplain, we might need to talk about kind of the emergency plan for all of that material.
It is the plan to submit a letter of map change to remove outdoor storage from the floodplain.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Any public comments regarding this large scale? Commissioners, any comments or questions from you?
I just have a question on the, is the overall elevation of this project, is it higher or lower than the nature center?
I guess I'm not quite sure where the nature center is.
It's just across the creek.
I don't know what their elevation is. It's probably similar, because we're above floodplain adjacent to the same elevation they are. So they probably raised theirs out of floodplain. I mean, you can't see this.
I think they're at a similar elevation, but yet there is no visibility through that canopy.
You can't see through that canopy on either side.
I just, what.
Maybe in the winter.
What, the cut sheets in here are not clear enough on the light fixtures as to their lumens and to their, I mean, I can see the foot candles and stuff like that, but, and the color temperature that is chosen, but with the proximity to that nature center, I would like to comment that we might, I don't know, a little bit lower poles might be possible, or a warmer color temperature, just to avoid, you know, just some, you know, possible negative interaction, light pollution in that vicinity.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that. As far as the photometric plan goes, if we need to, we can submit something showing the photometrics at the property lines, showing that it's within a reasonable level.
Looks like it's pretty low. It looks decent. It's just, you know, glare and stuff like that can sometimes be an issue.
Any further comments? If there are none, this will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. I pass a seven-zero. Next up is L twenty-five dash twenty-three, Creek Front forty-nine, Lot Seven. Also presented by ESI.
Nick Boning here with ESI. I can answer any questions y'all have about the development for Lot Seven.
Thank you for that. Staff comments?
In addition to standard comments for planning, we'll require perimeter landscaping along the east side of the property line. So that would either be along the east side of the parking lot, or kind of in line with the new street stuff out there.
Yeah, we're looking at some landscaping on the east side of that parking lot to kind of help create that perimeter.
And my other recommendation was where we have that, you know, pretty steep slope on the south side of that building, we may want to look into some specific seed mixes for slope stabilization that can provide extra landscaping also.
Yep, we can look into that.
Any further staff comments? Any public comment regarding this large scale? Commissioners, any comments from you?
Just the same one about color temperature as the previous one.
What is the color temperature? Oh. We don't like blue or purple light. Let's just put it that way. He may know.
The color temperature for this one in Lot Two is three K.
Nice.
Thank you.
If there are no more comments about lighting or other things, this will be a motion for subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. I pass a seven-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we move on to boarded adjustment. First up is B twenty-five dash thirty-six, John and Wendy Campbell. This is a variance to increase fence height from three foot to eight foot, presented by Wendy Campbell.
Hello, I'm Wendy Campbell.
Hello.
I'm at four-seven-zero-one Tyler Place. I wanted to just state that the fence that's currently there is not three foot. It's actually six foot.
I thought it looked taller.
It's on the side of the house, and it's six foot, but we're going to be, we want to extend the fence, and there's a slope. So we want to make it eight feet, so that it's more aesthetic. It'll look like seven, but it's going to be, I would like it to be eight.
Are you replacing the existing fence with the new fence? Is that what you're doing?
We're replacing it with the storm that came in. It's basically falling down, so we have to replace it.
Sure.
But like I said, our deck, which is in the backyard, it does go from the seven feet, but it has to, it rises up to eight to be even.
Understood.
And then further, further down the slope, you know, that's why I wanted an eight-foot fence, so that it matches well.
And are you just ending that fence at the tree line? Is that all it is, the fence on this one side?
Yes, just to that tree line.
Okay. Staff comments? None? Any public comment regarding this fence request? Yes, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, we're Edie and Mike Love, and we own the house in, in back of, or east of.
East of. We have a common fence.
Sure.
And our, our situation is, they don't take care of their property. They don't take care of the fence. The common fence, which is about seventy feet, thirty-some feet of that right now, is actually lying in our yard. It's propped up with dead limbs. We have a tenant there who propped it up. And about a year, a year ago, well, two years ago, I tried, about the back part of that fence was leaning over into our yard. And I tried for more than a year to get John to fix the fence. It's his fence. It belongs to that house. And he just didn't do it, wouldn't do it. And so finally, my tenant and I fixed the fence. So now, now the rest of it is down in our yard. We have a lawn service. They have to work around that, and it's a real problem. And it's just, rather than they have a new fence, I'd like for them to repair the existing fence. We have some pictures of it, if it means anything.
No, I believe you.
As Wendy said, obviously, she knows they need to replace.
Right.
But on, we received our certified letter, and the only information on that was extend and heighten existing fence Andrew's side from six to eight feet. So it didn't say where they want to put the fence exactly, other than at the back of, well, at the back of those bushes that you saw in the photo. But from their existing fence to the back of those bushes is twenty feet. And if you, it's not that much of a slope. It's not like a whole downhill. It's just a gradual slope. And so behind those bushes from where the fence is, that distance is a full twenty feet. And if you put an eight-foot high fence there, I just have visions of the obelisk in two thousand and one Space Odyssey movie. It's a nice spacious drive when you come into the neighborhood, and it would look like a big block is just right there. And I, I don't, I understand when you have property, you'd like to expand your, your yard. I'm all for them doing that. I just think eight feet on that street side and on, I, also, I'm assuming that they want to replace the entire fence, although this doesn't state anything about doing that. They, it just states that they want to extend their whole edge of the fence, that side on Andrew, and not repair or replace what's on our side. And part of our side of the fence is not all our backyard. Half of it's our backyard, half of it's our front yard. And so I, I do have photos. We didn't know for sure this meeting was going on until yesterday. And so we took pictures today, but you don't have any of those on file. But, so to come out to the, I don't care if they wanted to come out three feet further or six feet and have an eight-foot high fence, it, it wouldn't look so bad. But to come out a full twenty feet, it's just gonna block our view from that house to begin with. It's always been there for thirty years, so.
Just be the proverbial sore thumb in the neighborhood.
Yeah. It really would look like a big box, I think. But I do understand Wendy and John wanting a little bit larger yard. It's, it's the property they own. If they wanted to go eight feet where the existing fence is, I, it wouldn't be an eyesore, and it, you know, would block their problem to solve.
I guess I'm confused. I thought that's what was the request, is to replace existing fence with a taller fence. Is that not what you're asking for? Please come to the podium. I'm sorry.
I guess just that front part, how do I say, I, we, I want to replace the whole fence, all of it, because it needs to be replaced. The side, the fence that there, that is on their property, I'm not going to make taller. It's going to stay exactly the same. It's just this frontage. The, the road is right along there, so you'll see the fence right where, how can I explain, like, this is our house, and then this is across the street, I have another neighbor, and their fence ends right here. And we're just going to copy them, so that our fence is in the same place as the neighbor that is across the street.
Is this image accurate? We moved.
We go back to that drawn site plan?
It's along Andrew.
Yeah, is that where?
So just that portion, just that portion along Andrew, we want to put behind the trees and to make a, a foot taller, because the deck, my deck on this side is eight foot.
And just from, from planning, just for a little clarification, so we would see this as a, as a corner lot and for commissioners and the public. So really, the way that we view this is that there's two fronts and two sides, and not even a rear of the lot that we would refer to. And since our zoning ordinance requires a fence in the front yard, so if it sticks out further than the edge of the house, it's considered a front yard fence, and that can only be to three feet high. So I think we were under the impression that it would either be altered in a way that was aesthetic enough to meet ordinance or replaced. But since the request was for above three feet, we are just processing it as a variance request for a front yard fence to be from three to eight, which is the ultimate of what you want, right? But we, we had no discussion about like a side fence that was going to be raised or increased in height. Just this front portion that's drawn in that black marker is what considered. I just, I just want to verify that we're, we're looking at the correct request.
I mean, if, yeah, I guess so. If you don't want us to extend it, we don't have to.
I just want to make sure I fully understood you. That's all.
I just wanted, since I'm, I'm hoping to get this new fence, I thought it would be nice to be a little bit taller to add more privacy. And then I thought, well, why don't we go ahead and extend it to have more backyard? But it's not, I mean, if it, I'm here to just, you know, see if it can happen or not. I don't know. It would be nice, because like I said, my deck is eight feet, and there is, it's not a huge slip, like she said, but it is at least a foot or more as you go down towards the, the road. And I don't see it being a, an eyesore, because you're just driving down the road. It's not blocking a view, and it's equaling the neighbor across from us.
Is this view from Tyler?
It's from.
Or Andrew? Yeah, Andrew is what I meant.
May I show some pictures to you?
I don't, yeah, I don't know that, a damaged fence, we really have nothing to say about that that I'm aware of. Maybe Ed can speak to that, if he's been, if he wants to. I don't know what the enforcement of, of a fence that's in disrepair or whatever.
It is an old fence. It's a twenty-year-old house, and we did have a storm. And yes, my husband did not fix the fence.
Sure.
And they, they did. He should have, but he didn't, and I can't control that.
Understood. And we don't really speak to that anyway, unfortunately.
Just from my understanding, what is that five feet, the arrows up there, what is that denoting? Are you saying you're moving at five feet?
I was going to just extend the fence, yes.
But how far?
But she was, she said that it was twenty feet, to the trees, to behind the trees. I thought it, I definitely didn't think it was twenty feet.
It's twenty feet from your existing fence.
Twenty feet. But like I said, it's going to match the neighbor that is just across.
Which would be twenty feet.
So if it needs to be twenty feet, then we can adjust it to twenty feet.
Is, is the twenty feet that you're referring to, is that, is that a measurement that you guys took from what, the sidewalk or the road in?
No, no, no. That's from their existing fence out to the trees.
To the trees.
They have planted in front of their fence. That's twenty feet from their fence out to these little trees.
So in this image, you're talking, it's twenty foot from the fence that's shown in this picture, to these small trees that have been planted? I don't, my assumption, and maybe you can correct me, I'm hearing that she just wants to replace existing fence where it's located from a six foot to an eight foot. Is that not what you're asking for?
Just that part, just that part, from six to eight. But there was also the extension to behind the tree.
I see. So your current fence is tucked behind your house, and dead ends to the back of your house.
It's the side of the, yeah.
And you're asking to come out to the side of your house, five foot, and then turn and go, so you will be closer.
It'll be closer to the road. It'll match the neighbor across, across from us on Tyler. But it doesn't have, I mean, it's like, I guess there's two things going on here. And we could vote, like, maybe on two different things.
It's just the height for us that we would consider, right? A front yard fence, that can be anywhere from the edge of your house to the, to the sidewalk, right? So I don't, we're not as much concerned. We would just, we have restrictions on the height of a front yard fence. But where in that front yard?
Are you saying not to put it behind, not to extend it to behind the trees?
There's also a setback from the center of the street before your fence.
But for, for a building, for, for the front yard fence?
It's really, I mean, it's the side yard, and it does, if you stand and you're looking at the house across from us on Tyler, it would match where their fence is exactly.
On my photo, you can see the fence across the, and yes, there. But you can see the space in between that would, the, the fence on the other side of her street is more at the end of the little road area. It's not in the middle of the whole residential area. It's not in the middle of the whole residential area.
It's on the far side of the house, on the other side of the street.
By the way, my, I can only go by the letter I received from them for what, how, what it says the purpose of the meeting is. And all it says is the extension will go just behind decorative line of trees.
That's 20 feet.
Which is 20 feet. And then they wanted to raise it to eight feet. And so eight feet is too high, which is block what we get to visually see from the front yard, but.
The front yard that's a driveway.
And none of this really addresses the fact that I have photos of the whole fence falling down between our.
Yeah, again, that's something that we can speak to. So I guess the question is, you're wanting to extend the fence toward Andrew Avenue at least five foot from the house and then turn and go back toward the property that's adjacent to you and that fence side you're requesting is eight foot, is that correct?
Yes, and our deck is on.
Yeah, I'm just, we just wanna just talk about the fence.
It's to add more privacy and that's why we.
No, I understand. Uh, we, this happens, we get these all the time. I'm gonna ask the commissioner Zima has any questions about what she's asking for. Yeah.
I mean, just for clarity, all, all we're voting on is the height, correct?
Yeah, we're voting whether or not she can do eight foot, um, still six. What I don't know is, and this picture is misleading from what they're requesting because what they would be requesting now is to start at the corner of the house and come toward the photo, if you will, the person taking this picture, five foot to put a gate in, then turn in and go in to the left, uh, to the tree line, I don't know how far that is, and doing that with an eight-foot fence versus the current six-foot fence that is actually behind the edge of the house currently.
Correct.
So what actually will we be voting on? I'm confused myself.
You may.
Oh, I just wanna say, is there any concern whether it comes out five feet or comes out 20 feet from where it currently is?
Uh, no, if it's, if it's past the house, it's considered a front yard fence, so it's really just the three feet. And then if it's too close to the right-of-way, we might ask engineering to check for just a site, um, to make sure that things are visible, but that's the only concern.
Right, we would, um, I mean, they'd be allowed to put their fence up to the back of the sidewalk or wherever the right-of-way line is unless there is a site issue at the intersection. Then we would have to figure out how to amend it from there.
So this will be called for the vote and we are voting if the applicant can replace the existing six-foot fence with an eight-foot fence with a slight alteration.
Call for the vote.
I pass this six to one.
Can you tell me exactly what passed? Cause I get confused.
Basically, the rough drawing that was made where you extend the fence five foot towards Andrew from your house and then you go back toward your property line with the, the trees, you can make that eight foot.
Okay, so I can go out five feet.
Correct.
And I can make it eight foot.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is B 25 dash, yes. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was looking at my paper, forgot where we were. B 25 dash 51, Jose Villanova in Alma Perez. This is a variance for reduction, front setback from 30 foot to 25 foot.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Villanueva, as you just right before. Yeah, just here to ask for a variance, uh, for a reduction of my front setback to be able to build a one-and-a-half staircase on my, uh, front, uh, porch and that's it.
Go ahead.
I was gonna ask, do we have a site plan or a visual? Um, I, I didn't see one for this and.
I, I broke one when I applied for the permit. I don't know why it's not showing, showing.
We do, it wasn't, it was in your packet, a small hand-drawn one. And that, that five-foot setback request that you're asking for, that reduction, what was it, what was it to build in the front?
The thing is that, uh, I decided to build a front porch because we have not, we have slope in front and in the back of the house, so we have not a space to, to anything in the exterior of the house. So, and, uh, we should have at least 40, 40 feet from the, uh, sidewall curb, uh, but I, I need a reduction. I actually only need one more foot because, yeah, you know, to, to build a, uh, for, for a feet-wide staircase, uh, so, but we are, we are asking for five just to, to have enough space.
How big is a porch? What's the dimensions of your porch?
It is, um, 10 by, uh, 16-foot area.
16 wide or 16 deep?
Uh, it's.
You come, you come out front of the house 16 foot or you come in front of the house 10 foot?
Yeah, 10, 10 foot.
And 16 to?
16 by 10 and another, yeah, there is two section both together, but, uh, if you look at the house, it's, uh, 10 by 16 and then it has to cover another, uh, 10 by 14, but, uh, from the main entrance of the house, which is farther from the front, uh, from the curb.
Yeah, I think, this is hard, I think, I just need a better drawing.
Have you seen this, Ed, or, or building or had any, he may have some insight.
I can show it to you in, in my phone.
This thing started when Tom put a stop record on it. This is built on Sweetwater Ranch, which anybody's been out to Ben Yarri Park, you know, that's a very steep hill slide there. So the house does sit fairly high up on the hill. What he did was built a deck that basically comes out where you normally have a set of steps going up to the porch, you know, the small front punch landing. He, he brought that out so that it goes about five feet in front of his snubbed-out garage. So that's where the stairs come up off that garage to that porch. Getting that pretty much right? So he's adding about five feet in front of the garage and that's why he needs a 25, a reduction to a 25-foot setback.
Got it.
And the carpentry is very good.
So it's just adding five foot to the front, if you will, of the house where the garage currently would end?
Five foot in front of the garage, basically.
Was just, just allowing steps to go up to access the deck, which I'm assuming is leveled to the front entrance of the house.
And stop blocking any windows or anything, that, the windows are all above.
Perfect. Nevermind. I think I understand. Any questions from commission? If none, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
7-0, you have your deck, sir.
Thank you very much for everyone.
She can pick up a permit. Come by the building office, she can pick up a permit.
Next up is B 25 dash 54, Judith Hollingsworth. Uh, this is a variance for reduction, front setback from 30 foot to 20 foot, presented
My name is Neil Hollingsworth and I live at 2004 Melissa Lane with my wife. And, uh, we wanna build a carport on the front of our house in the existing driveway. We've gotten hail damage twice now and, uh, we want to keep our vehicles safe. I've spent 20,000 on mine and 16 on hers this last time and I just wanna put a cover. What I wanna do is attach it to the, to the, uh, existing home, make it look like the others, so it's more of a U-shaped and, uh, just, uh, we, we want the 20 instead of 30 so that it's big enough to put both of our vehicles in.
I'm assuming that your garage is not accessible for a car at this point or you wouldn't need both?
There's no, there's no garage.
Do you all have a garage?
No.
Okay, sorry.
No.
Any issues with this, Ed?
An aesthetic issue.
Sure. Till I understand the help, I've got my fifth roof going on next week. Any questions from commissioners? If none, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Pass this 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is B 25 dash 56, St. Raphael Catholic Church. Uh, this is a variance for additional monument sign. We'll circle back. Let's move to, uh, B 25 dash 58, Red Barn Bakery. This is a variance from commercial design standards, uh, asking, uh, for outdoor storage, trash collection loading areas, lighting, landscaping, variance for reduction of minimum distance from residential zone and waiver for street improvements on East Robinson, presented by Jason Young.
Hi, Jason Young, here to represent the applicant, or represent the owner of the We are requesting as few variances as possible, the minimum variance as possible. The first one is a trash enclosure face, street-facing door. We've designed the site as circular to reduce the amount of impermeable area on the site. Unfortunately, that places the dumps, the best place for the dumpster, for the dumpster to have the accessible reach for the truck within view of the street. The grade of the floor of the dumpster will be four and a half feet below the street, so with the six-foot required privacy fence around it, you'll see about a foot and a half, maybe two feet from the street. It also will have a landscape strip. It's not gonna be visible from the street unless somebody's going very slowly down Robinson. Um, we are also asking for a variance for a loading area within 20 feet of a pedestrian way. This pedestrian way is gonna access the north parking. We are going to stripe this area to make sure it's safe, there won't be any vehicle, vehicular conflicts. But we do need the loading area because this is a bakery they're gonna be loading in, uh, products that are made off-site. We are also asking for a street frontage landscaping variance and this is typical variance where there's an easement along the street frontage and spring door waters not allow trees over their lines. The building foundation landscaping is also a result of this being a drive-through and the loading area, the west side and the north side, there's just no place for landscaping. On the west side, there will be a, there are actually existing trees from the dominoes that was built next to us that will remain and screen that side of the building. Pedestrian walkway, we're also asking for a variance from pedestrian walkway lighting. This is a business that will operate mostly during the day. In the times of the year where it is dark in the morning or the evening, we will, as required for, by lighting requirements, there will be parking lot illumination that will illuminate the sidewalk that's next to the building. The only one in question might be the public sidewalk connection. There is a street light that would more or less illuminate the public, uh, access. But again, most of the year, this business will be operated during daylight hours. And I believe that's it for our commercial design standards variance. Happy to answer any questions.
Any staff comments? Uh, any commissioning comments, commissioner comments? Can you talk? Do you guys wanna do the variance all at once?
No.
Answer's a no for that. Do you wanna do, um, all but lighting together? I had a, had a hint that would be the case. So let's, uh, vote on variances for outdoor stores, trash collection, loading areas, landscaping and reduction of minimum distance from residential zone. That's a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
I pass this six to one. Then we'll take the variance request on lighting. This will be called for the vote.
Call for the vote.
That fails four to three. We also have a waiver. Uh, this will be a waiver for, from street improvement on East Robinson Avenue. This is a motion for it to city council to approve or deny this waiver. This is a motion to city council in a second. Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Was that a motion to approve or deny?
That's a great question. Uh, took it as approved, but, yeah. Howard and I have been doing this long enough, I knew what he was motioning. I pass this six to one. Large scale or, excuse me, the overall Red Barn Bakery is a call for the vote. Nevermind, we took that in the first one. That's it. Thank you. Basically everything passed but your lighting.
Uh, for the waiver, staff will prepare the resolution that goes to city council on the 26th. Um, and for the variance, if you do wanna appeal, you have 15 days to put it in writing while you think the planning commission aired. It would have to be appealed to, um, to council.
Thank you. Uh, B 25 dash 56, St. Raphael Catholic Church, variance for additional monument sign?
Good evening, um, my name is Carlos Rodriguez with St. Raphael's Catholic Church. So we're, um, asking to see if we could have another, add another sign, um, on our property. Um, we've got, uh, 28.6 acres. Um, we've got one sign on Sunset 412, it's far west of the facilities. And then on, um, West End, there's no, there's no signs at all. So one of our entrances closest to the church where the, where the administrative offices are at, uh, is extremely busy and we have a lot of, um, you know, EPS and of course the mail and a lot of our deliveries and drop-offs come through there. And a lot of people get, you know, get, are always calling in to find out where, you know, where's the best entrance to get into. So anyway, we, um, are hoping that maybe y'all would, um, give us a chance to add another sign there. I did have, um, of course, it's gonna be a 30-foot setback. There's the 10-foot and then because of the gas and the water utilities, it's gonna go back another 20 feet, so, and it'll be closest to the, um, um, to where the offices are at. So basically, we were hoping that, um, y'all would approve that for us. And it's just a small sign, it's like a four-foot by three-foot, there you go.
Is that an image of it?
Uh, yes, sir. Yeah. And it does state on there the main entrance, you know, and so.
Yeah.
And I think that's pretty much it.
And I just wanna note that this location is not in, um, a sign overlay district or the special visibility district for signage.
Is the brick the same as your, or close to the color you're building? I'm assuming the brick of the, the base of this sign, the brick that you show there? Is this a replica?
Yes, that, that'll match our, that matches our building, yes.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
I pass this 7-0. Thank you.
Uh, thank y'all.
Moving forward to waivers, W 25 dash 25, Gabriel. Sorry, I can't say that last name, I apologize. Waiver for street improvement sidewalk on Reed Avenue. Can't wait to hear, I should say this name, this is awesome.
Good evening, um, well, I'm not opposed to the sidewalk.
Can you state your name?
I mean, we need one, especially, there's, we need sidewalks everywhere here in Sabrina.
Can you, can you state your name just before you start, sir?
I'm Gabriel Gonzalez, I'm the owner of the property. I'm not opposed to the sidewalk, I mean, just, I think it's more planning and engineering process through that whole street before me doing sidewalk in that area or my property. That's basically what I, I'm opposed to, that before drain, I mean, it is drainage process, I mean, it's gonna cause issues for my property for drainage underneath that sidewalk and all that, so before all that, it's some planning or engineering process through the whole street before me. So before all that, it's some planning or engineering process through the whole street before me doing a sidewalk through there.
Thank you.
He took the words right out of my mouth. I'd hate to have a-
We got work to do.
Yeah, I'd hate to have a brand new sidewalk here that we have to end up taking out later because it's in the wrong place.
Uh, this will be a motion to forward to city council to approve or deny this waiver request.
Move that we forward it to city council to approve this waiver request?
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. I pass this seven zero. Thank you, sir.
Staff will prepare an ordinance that needs to go to city council on the twenty-sixth. You're encouraged to attend, um, but you're not required to, okay, on the twenty-sixth?
Next to W twenty-five dash twenty-eight four five five seven West Seton LLC. Waiver of street improvements on Seton Drive, presented by Hayden Gilder.
Hayden Gilder, property owner, four five five seven Seton. Uh, we're requesting the waiver on the street improvements. It's residential property down Seton and, um, I think we've presented everything to staff for review, um, and ask for a waiver on that street improvement.
Uh, your proposed parking lot, is that, what is that material?
Asphalt.
Thank you. Any comments from staff?
No, I just want to mention that we have a corresponding non-large scale development, um, currently under review for this, for this parking lot addition. Um, and I think you guys saw this property just a couple of months ago. Uh, it was approved for rezoning to a commercial zone.
Thank you. If there are no comments, uh, this will be a motion forward to city council to approve or deny this waiver request of street improvements.
Motion to city council to approve this waiver request.
Thank you, second please?
Second.
Thank you. I pass this five two. Thank you.
Staff is going to prepare a resolution that this has to go through city council for a final vote, August twenty-sixth. You're not required to be there, but you're encouraged to be there in case they have questions.
Requested for twelfth, is that still a possibility?
There we go, you just need to make sure and follow up with our office so that we put in that request and don't forget about it. But thank you.
Next up is W twenty-five dash thirty Thompson Building Parking Lot. This is a waiver of street improvements on South Thompson Street and Churchill Avenue, presented by Bates and Associates. Nobody wants to improve the street?
I guess not. Uh, Braden with Bates and Associates again. We're requesting a waiver on two different streets. One, well, the north one is Churchill Street. Our hardship or our waiver request is because, uh, the, the street's already built out with sidewalk on both sides. Um, additionally to the west, uh, the lot has already been developed and there's a landowner there right now. For the south, or I'm sorry, the east on Thompson, um, right now, there is a large, extremely large drainage swell going up and down right there, imposing site. Very, very tough site conditions right there, as well as the south property right, has connection already. And we consider that to be a developed lot.
Proposal for you. So the private sidewalk that goes from Churchill along the back of the parking lot to that drive, would y'all be willing to take that existing sidewalk to the south property line? Where, where it is, not along the road, but, you know, to still provide that, that pedestrian access all the way down?
I would have to check and see if there's the electric, if the power poles are in the way. But I don't think that they are, I, I think that our client would be fine with that.
Okay, because it, it wouldn't be in the right of way, we'd probably have to look at some kind of pedestrian access easement. But then we'd still get some connectivity and we wouldn't have that sidewalk down there on Thompson. There's a little, little bit of, little bit of sidewalk missing on Churchill. Is, are there utility conflicts over there?
Yes, on the, on the far west side.
Stop short?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
There's a bunch of pedestals hanging out.
Gotcha.
Could you put in an overpass of seventy-one to La Herta Restaurant, is that something that you look at?
No. Super easy.
Are you, um, are you changing parking to the south of the building? Or, I don't know, I'm just looking at this.
We're, we are adding.
Adding parking?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And-
Did y'all understand what I was asking him?
Yeah.
If you see on this one, you can, yeah, that sidewalk would just carry down and then it would be there next to that new parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
As long, as long as the power poles are not happening.
Any questions from commissioners? If there are none, this will be a motion to forward to city council to approve or deny this waiver.
Motion to forward to city council for approval.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I pass this seven zero with a caveat from Ms. Katie that you would do all, make all intentions to extend the sidewalk further south.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and, and just so you know, Braden, the way that we'll, we'll put forth that waiver request, uh, so we'll still prepare a resolution that goes to council on the twenty-sixth. But we might have some sort of design or something that would show what, what that, um, potential private sidewalk would be in the location. And then from this little survey that was in the packet, I don't see a power pole in the way. I know we need to double check, but it was a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you. Next up is W twenty-five dash thirty-one Mansia Properties Parking Lot. This is a waiver of street improvements on West Robinson Avenue, presented by Bates and Associates. Man, we wore out Robinson Avenue tonight.
Another street improvements, I know. Addie Muncy with Bates and Associates. And, uh, with this project, um, so basically, the adjacent properties, um, I know they're already developed and I know it's, I mean, same with this one, it's already developed. Um, there are existing utilities along the southern property lines, the, along Robinson. Um, if we were to place any sidewalk, it's essentially going to go into the drives of the other properties. Um, I know there is sidewalk, kind of a couple of properties down, but it's just placing this exactly in that drive location.
The good news is, is this is actually part of a twenty twenty-three bond project, um, for south side intersection improvements. And we will be doing the street improvements for you, however, I would, um, ask for payment in lieu of those improvements.
Do you understand what that is?
Yes, yes.
I agree, I mean, that's a horrible section of Springdale.
It's going to look really, really nice.
And without, without those improvements, I would be denying, personally, I would be denying this, because it, that's just an awful. You can't walk that section of Springdale. Are you okay with doing a payment in lieu of?
I believe my owner would be fine with it.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I can't remember how we motioned this, my brain is tired.
It, it'll be with a recommendation, if, if the motion is to, to recommend payment in lieu of.
There you go. So commissioners, uh, if someone's in favor of doing a payment in lieu of motion, that's what we would put forth.
Motion to forward to council with a request for payment in lieu.
Thank you, second? Thank you. I pass this seven zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance for the twenty-sixth.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Next is, uh, my favorite chapter of this is other. Uh, this is a large scale L twenty-five dash twenty-four for modern storage. This is a revised, uh, I guess, large scale plan. Uh, this is a phasing plan review presented by Riley House from the Design Group.
Hello, I'm Riley House with the Design Group, um, on behalf of Modern Storage Springdale. Um, we are just trying to revise our phasing plan from the original two phases down, um, to five phases. So phase two would just be constructing two buildings rather than the originally planned six.
Sorry, you intended to still build the same amount of buildings, you're just phasing it differently?
Yes.
Okay.
And if, if I could make a, a comment from the planning department is that, um, whenever a phasing plan is revised and a phasing, um, phases are added or eliminated, we have to have planning commission approval. But I do appreciate all the work and all the infrastructure work that they did put into this project. It's already been graded, building pads, from my understanding, are already there and ready. So this is really just, um, ensuring that we, um, reviewed it to make sure that we have the right, um, phasing in a line and that landscaping and all things are done in a, in a timely manner.
So are you looking at building the two purple buildings in this drawing?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. I pass this seven zero, your revised phasing plan.
Thank you.
Last item on the agenda before the planning director's report, which I believe is twenty minutes if I remember, is L twenty-four dash thirty-seven County Line Storage Approval Extension. Uh, this is presented by Swoop Consulting, uh, we saw this a couple of times last year. I'm guessing we need a little bit more time to get this figured out.
Correct. Dirk Thibodeau, Thibodeau again with Swoop Consulting, they're just requesting an extension, yes.
Any comments? If there are none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. I pass this seven zero.
May I ask how long the extension is for?
One year.
I thought it was, but it wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're only, and you're only granted the one extension, so if, if it's not started within this year, then we'll have to start the process over again.
Perfect, I'll let them know, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the planning director's report.
I have it, I have it. All right, well, we made it through multiple pods.
Thanks, guys.
All right, it's been a busy, busy summer, um, for planning, so I emailed, I sent you guys, um, this planning director's report early this morning. I want to give a, a heads up. I want to say thank you to the commissioners that were able to come out, um, yesterday to the Walter LaFever Bridge ribbon cutting. It was a good event, I included a little picture. Jennifer represented active transportation, um, and rode her bike up there, um, while Mark drove. Um, I wanted to list some of the new, uh, newly issued C of Os and within this last month. So Silos on the Square, that was just for that round clubhouse that they have over on Powell Street, that one was finished out. Uh, Black Forge Warehouse over on Conniere was done. CCO Event Center on North Thompson, um, Springdale Tractor that had some small revisions, um, the Star on Spring, on Spring Street. And Clear Creek Apartments, so the one just south of Sam's Club over off Gene George. Um, Sarah went out there and, uh, we were able to issue C of O for buildings A through C. Um, it's a good start. And Shaw Park Baseball Complex Edition, um, also. Good news, we're looking to expand our team, just wanted to get the word out, we're currently hiring for a plan or two, an administrative assistant. Upcoming work sessions, so August nineteenth is our August one. Um, and we only have three or four more work sessions of the year, so we got to make them count. So August, it's going to be the importance of sight lighting in a growing Springdale. And not sure if you guys know, but we have a few lighting experts on our planning commission that might be able to help add to the conversation, um, and help guide us. So it's a hot topic lately and I think it's coming up more and more with our development. Um, and as we grow, we need to, we need to chat about it. Um, and then September, Katie and her team graciously accepted, uh, to present on stormwater mitigation for Springdale developments. She did that, I guess it's probably been a couple of years ago, but we got great feedback, it was very helpful for everyone, so we're hoping, hoping to do that again. Um, recap on July city council. So the first council meeting, four Platts were approved, two final Platts. Um, and then the, the later, the July twenty-second meeting, um, we had one item, we had a rezoning table just to verify the legal description. Um, there was a waiver request that you guys had recommended for approval for the veil at Watkins. Um, and council voted for, um, a five-year bill of assurance for them. And the other six items between rezoning and waivers were approved and passed. Um, update on our downtown, so downtown master plan update is in the works, we're working with DSA and, um, getting ready for that. I think H three is tentatively scheduled for, uh, the later August twenty-sixth city council meeting, which a bunch of these waivers and rezonings will be at too. Um, so you guys are always welcome and invited and we'll make sure that you guys know about that, um, when it's scheduled. And then just to give you an update, so ideally at the beginning of the year, we were hoping to have the downtown master plan update and a form-based code update done together in conjunction and then present those together at the same. Um, we have been trying to collaborate with a local stakeholder group and some of our, our developers who are working downtown. And we just want to make sure that we evaluate, um, all the proposed changes to the form-based code. So that one might get delayed until September, um, but we don't want to do it fast, we want to do it right. This Friday, um, Ozarks at Large at the Medium is going to be featuring, um, Jaclyn here, our assistant director, on a little podcast. So if you guys are available, tune in, um, and then I want, I saw Mark going for the. Um, and then the last one, I want to keep you guys, um, constantly updated on the unified development code process. Progress still coming, we have a meeting, um, this week with the consultants and then we'll be scheduling a more formal one with legal teams and engineering and going over a code diagnostic, so I hope at, at different work sessions and along the way, we'll keep you updated, but it's all still very exciting.
Thank you. Congrats, Jaclyn, on being famous.
Get your autograph now.
For that, we adjourn, thank you all, appreciate you.
Y'all have any specific stormwater questions that you want to address at that next, uh, meeting? Just send me an email and let me know. Careful what you wish for.